Call to order the special meeting of the City of Aransas Pass City Council, May 10, 2021 at 5:30 PM. And we're going to go to the city manager, which is consider an act and ordinance canvassing and declaring the result of the general election held on May 1st, 2021, in the City of Aransas Pass, Texas, for the purpose of electing a mayor and council members for Place 1 and 3.
Yes, and the purpose of this item is to canvas the returns, the election returns from the May 1st election, and I believe each one of you have the canvas report, so then I'll read the totals aloud, and then after that we'll have to take action on the ordinance. In the mayor's race, Jason Knight received 179 votes, Adon Chapa received 315, Ram Gomez received 377. For council member Place 1, Kerry Scruggs received 457, and Eric Candevoto received 395. And council member Place 3, Hector Rios received 420, and Jan Moore received 434. So we'll need a motion to accept the canvassing of the results and pass the ordinance.
Well, I made a motion that we pass the cabinet seat of the votes.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye. Now, we're going to go to conducting, conducts swearing of newly elected council members.
Do you want to come down here? We can do this right now. You owe me.
I should have brought you here.
We get paid? Oh my gosh!
I think they owe us money.
I think we gave it back to the city four years ago, we said, "You guys need the dollar to my water incentive."
Why by now?
Yeah.
And I don't remember that, I'm still waiting for my dollars.
You agreed to it too.
Okay, so raise your hand if you'd like to me. I, Jan Moore.
Ram Gomez.
To someone who swears.
To someone who swears.
That I will faithfully execute.
Faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of, the duties of the office of council seat. Place 3.
The duties of mayor.
Of the City of Aransas Pass.
Of the City of Aransas Pass.
And will to divest of my ability and will to, as the law will be, preserve, protect, and defend, preserve.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And every state, and every state, so now we got.
Congratulations. Two more years. We think so.
I believe so.
And I'm going to get Cory on the line for this next item.
This Cory?
Okay, I just wanted to get you on the line Cory.
Ask him if it's safe, is it safe for him to be, to participate, is it safe?
Cory, is it safe for you to participate, you're driving, right?
My connection is pull over real quick, I'm, I would find a spot to pull over.
Okay, all right.
So, what we're doing here, yes, okay, what we're doing here is, can you hear me Cory?
Yes, sir.
Let's get the other microphone over here, one second. What we're doing here, mayor and council, is going over, because this was discussed at another meeting, and we decided to do more research, and so Cory has done that.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you fine Cory, and Cory has done additional research on the three companies for the mowing.
Hello.
On city properties, and.
Is he there Cory?
I don't think he can hear you.
Can you hear us Cory?
It got quiet there, I think Gary was talking, was breaking in and out.
Okay.
Let me, let me speak, I saw red on this one, that may have been the problem. So Cory, what I'm telling the council, can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what I'm telling the council, mayor and council, is that on this particular item, we had talked about it before, as far as the mowing contracts go, and wanted, staff wanted to do at mayor and council's instruction, broad research on the three proposals that have been received, and that's where we went out and did additional work, and I'm going to turn it over to you now to talk about what you have found out on the three companies. They have before them the synopsis that you provided on all three companies, so they have those numbers, and they have your, your review information, but verbally, you may want to tell them what you've come up with, and, and a couple of issues to consider, so if you can hear me Cory, go ahead and take it over.
Okay, thank you, mayor and council, for allowing me to research all this, and sorry, I'm talking to you via phone conference, I kind of had a family emergency come up. So what I found out about these three companies, I'm going to start with the Marathon Group, they were the lowest bidder. I reached out to the point of contact for that company, I gained some information about their references, which there were a few municipalities, I reached out to those municipalities, and spoke with their code enforcement officers, I believe one of them was the city of Dickinson, I believe. They informed me that the Marathon Group did not hold up to city standards, they were pretty vague on exactly what they were not holding up to besides, they just weren't meeting what the city wanted. I reached out to a few other cities, some that Marathon Group informed us they worked for, and those other cities was not even aware who the Marathon Group was. I reached out to a bank, Corpus Christi BBVA, over at Corpus, they were very vague, they did not want to release information to me, due to they, I don't know if they fully understood what I was calling about, but they wouldn't release information to me. I also followed up again with the point of contact for Marathon, he did make a comment that if the city kept requesting more information, his boss may just say, "Hold the contract", they claimed that this was a filler, if you will, for their workers that mow around cell phone towers, so they grab these code enforcement jobs just to keep their guys busy, so that pretty much turned me off of that group, that's just my devaluation after speaking to a few other municipalities and so forth, which led me to the Superior Interior, which I believe was $95 an hour.
Cory, before you, Cory, if you can hear me, before you continue, I believe someone in the audience, what company are you with?
My name's Mark Lasky, I'm with Superior Interior.
Okay, there's someone from Superior here Cory, so I just wanted to make you aware of that, go ahead.
Yeah, Mark. Okay. Thank you, Mark, for arriving, sorry, I got the times mixed up.
[laughing]
Superior Interior, Mark Lince, he is actually a contractor here in the city, he's got the food truck over there on North Commercial, that just set up, I believe, a few months ago. He's from Porter Aransas, originally, I believe, is where we discussed, he's got, he's looking at buying a few more properties here in town. This is a mowing contract, he's wanting to start up, he's primarily taking care of his own properties, but he's wanting to kind of expand out. Since March 3rd, if you guys have any questions, I did look up his property information through the appraisal districts, he showed that he had two properties here in Aransas Pass that aren't well taken care of, he's got some property in Porter Aransas, and a few properties over by, city by the sea. Everything I was showing showed to be in good standing, reached out to Port A Code Enforcement, they said they had no open code violations on the properties over there, he does very well maintaining his properties. This is Superior Interior, they have adequate equipment, that I believe that would handle our code enforcement jobs in the city, they are aware they have to haul the debris off. I believe Mark said he had a small force, but he could get a lot more guys in here if it's a big job. If it's okay to council, Mark, did you, or did the council have any questions that I didn't cover with this group, with Superior?
I have a question, Mark. Are you the business that opened just north of Staff Street, the landscaping company? Is that where?
No, no, I'm, I bought the 735 North Commercial.
Nice.
It's right, okay, you know where the transmission, Atlas Transmission is?
Uh-huh, are you the gyro place?
Yes. And I'm making that, that's going to be my field office for my equipment, and my construction company, and I have, I actually have all my own lawn equipment, I have all my own construction equipment, and I have staff in San Antonio and here, and I'm, pretty much, I'm a, been a contractor all my life, and right now.
This kind of worked before.
Oh yeah, I've done, I'm a, I'm a general contractor.
Have you looked at the sites that Cory gave you, or have you been given a list?
Yes.
Okay, and you're familiar?
Yes.
With them, with no problems whatsoever?
I have a few questions on the scope of work, I guess, is what we're talking about, because like, like, so the huge trees on some of them, and Cory basically mentioned that would be, that would be a separate deal, as far as the contract goes.
I'm so sorry, what was the question?
Okay, the huge trees that are falling down on some of the properties, we talked about that Cory, remember, about tree removal, and excessive.
Yes, sir.
And you said Borough was handling.
Tito, Tito was still, he's still working on that T2 project, so some of those properties that have the trees falling down, I believe he's already addressing that, so he's getting that, he should have his own contractors taking care of that.
I mean, because I do have trailers and capabilities for bobcats and larger equipment if I need it.
Because I know, I know on some of these properties, if the trees are falling, it's hard for you to clean it completely, if you have to work around the trees, because you're not able to, to mow around it.
Yeah, well, I mean, I have the capabilities to remove the trees if necessary, and I just need to find, I mean, I'm not, I'm just, the bid is kind of vague.
Right.
I mean, it's just kind of described, mowing yard, that's easy, just mowing a lot, but when you go to mow a lot, you got to sit there, you got to clean it first where you can mow it, which means you got to walk it and pick the trash up so you can mow it decently, and then I was, and the rest of it's, you know, after we get it done the first time, it's going to be pretty simple, it's just the initial one is where.
We're hoping it's not repeats.
Well, yes, we hope.
Yes, yes.
But taking, looking at the one with the tree for example, I don't know if you can hear me or not Cory, but taking the one. hear me or not Cory, but taking the one of the tree example you used, uh, what additional cost would we be talking about for that one, for example?
Well, basically the time and the removal, you can have to chop it up and, and, and cut it to move it.
Okay.
And I know we're, we're doing this by...
Are you guys discussing four twenty-nine South Saunders, I believe, is that the tree you're talking about on that property?
Yes.
Okay, that should be on Tito's list, I know it was on his, uh, T2 list, on, you know, on his office wall. Um, so I do know that he's gone out for bids, and then I believe it was struck in off to back package, I'm not sure if it's a city property just yet, or if there's some legal issue that he came into on that specific property. I believe there were some attorneys involved on that one. Um, but I do know, I recall seeing that property on the T2 project list.
Well Cory, I have a question, if that property, four oh two South Saunders, is, is kind of on some legal issues, how can we send a private contractor onto that property to represent the city?
So the legal issues, from my understanding, because this was one of our demo docket properties, uh, Ms. Roxanne was working on this with, in quote, or, uh, recall the attorney firm that was representing on that one, basically I believe there, there is an attorney firm was...
If, matter of fact Cory, what happened with four twenty-nine, it is a, it was a tax sale. A company called Propel certified, uh, they got somehow, they got the sheriff's department to certify a sale for closure. And, cause I talked to Glenda, I talked to Glenda at the tax office, and she said that they, Propel has taken it over. So the city, what I'm, I'm gonna say, doesn't have anything to do with it.
Okay.
But, now, do y'all just, let me ask a question, if y'all, if, say there's a property in town where the, where the city, or it's like, I can call her Glenda, cause I've talked to her a lot, and she, the, the city, the tax people, are they the same entity as the city here, or are they different entity, the tax people?
The, the tax is the, the county.
Okay, so that's different. So, you say if you're gonna, we're gonna clean a tax property, does, do, do, we, we do it based on the, the tax people's recommendation, do you pay, do you bill them, or do you just gotta wait to get their permission to do it?
So as of right now, that, that property specifically is still under the previous property owner, they have not changed any of that information yet. Like I was saying, in our demolition process, there was, uh, they're still working on it, um, it has not been strucken off to the city or the, the taxing entities just yet. I checked it last week, and it's still in the previous, uh, property owner, um, that's losing the property. So it's still in a private, uh, property owner's name, that hasn't gone to line bargain or anything like that, from what I understand with Roxanne, when we had our last demo meeting.
Yeah, but the old taxes to all three of them, to the county, the city, and the school district, or just the county?
Uh, it should be all three.
All, all three.
All three of them.
All three, yes.
But I think if it's, um, if it's a property we have liens on, and, um, and these are properties that, uh, the court has ordered to be cleaned up, we will clean them up, and we have liens on them, we will charge, uh, the amount, uh, that we pay. Now, how often we get paid, that's an issue in every city that does this, uh, it's a different matter. Uh, but, um, we'll be paying, we'll be mowing private properties in which we have liens, and it's gone through the courts, that happens on a daily basis, uh, I'm gonna say daily, on a regular basis. But I think what it's coming down to, Cory, if you can hear me, this is Gary, is, and what I'm hearing you say, uh, I'm sorry, what's your last name?
Mark Luski.
Mark. Uh, what I'm hearing you say is, take any property that has logs, or concrete, or whatever, before you can mow, you gotta clean that, if that's additional hours, then that, uh, that, the amount that you have down there, it's just gonna be charged, if instead of taking two hours, it takes five hours, you're gonna be charging us five addition, three additional hours at that price, is, is what I understand you're saying.
Correct, that's, I just wanna verify that. I mean, I'll, I'll do the, any money work, I'll, I'll do, I'll tear the house down if you want me to. I just wanna know what you want me to do, I mean, I, that's, I was getting Cory on, you, when we, we look at each property, you give me a scope of work, and that's what I'll perform.
Yeah.
And then have Cory, okay, and I'm, I'm gonna take a lot of burden off him, cause I'm, I, I own a construction, I, I manage people and business, I, I manage and schedule everything. So I, I do this for a living.
I, I got to say this, so in other words, we're, we're paying, right, to get it cleaned up or whatnot, we put liens on it?
That's right.
And then it's gonna come back on the tax roll, we do not wanna sell it for two hundred dollars, right?
That's correct.
Bingo.
You got to say that. Well, that's...
You gotta get her money before you call back.
But, okay, and that's, this is why I brought that point up, because you know, the tax people settled for, they got minimum bids on certain properties, and they only gonna collect so much. So, you might wanna put it in there where you all get your money first.
Yeah, we are.
But we have to approve it before they can actually sell it, so we, if it's like, we're dealing with that on, when it comes.
I mean, I'll do whatever y'all ask me to do, but I'm just like, I mean, I'm just getting the information that I know of.
Sure.
On certain properties that, cause, you know, like I said, I, I do buy and sell properties.
Maybe we oughta send Tito or Cory to go walk those properties and see how bad it really is, that we...
I think they know, I think they have a good idea.
I know, you expressed that the last time, yes, and he also said it, so, but either way, however long it takes, that's what we gotta pay.
But it has, it has to be done, because it's a fire hazard.
And, and time is an issue here also, because of those rains we had.
It's gonna worse.
And the weeds are getting six foot tall somewhere, somewhere.
With every inch.
Which is favor of the council?
There's one more to go through, but that's way up there, that's like, I mean, that amount is way up there. So Cory, if you can hear me, I don't...
I'm here in town, I live in town, I'm twenty-four seven accessible, you can find me right down the street. Like I said, that's why, that's why I got to the meeting here, I, I got a, Cory called me at five twenty-eight, and said the meeting's at five thirty, so...
Well, you're here and he's not.
Yeah Cory. Cory said he'd be here.
I had nothing come up, I'm sorry guys.
Just bring the tacos next time.
Who is Cory?
I, I do, we do have one other group, uh, I believe, I don't know, my paper's in front of me, um, I believe it's called Keeping It Green Lawn Care Service.
Yeah.
They, they are another local area mowing contractor, uh, I believe he is based out of Portland, and he may be in the audience, he said he was gonna be there as well.
He's not.
No?
Yes, I believe, are you with Keeping It?
No, he's here.
Yeah, she is here.
Uh, the, the Keeping It Green, it's, it's a veteran owned, uh, mowing contractor business, uh, I believe he, whenever I did my extra research on him, he, I believe he said he's a barber, he's got a barber shop over Portland. Uh, he mainly mows residential properties, uh, Portland, Ingleside, Rockford, Corpus. Uh, he wanted to move more into the contract, uh, field, uh, for municipalities, he just recently submitted some bids for the city of Portland, uh, I believe they're still open over there, so I haven't, I wasn't able to really check anything out on that. Um, but he's got the resources as well, except his bid came in at, I believe, one seventy, one seventy-five an hour.
Yeah, one seventy.
But that was kind of a misunderstanding on the bid process, I explained, I made a note, if you look at the, on his packet, or his, uh, my research findings, at the very bottom, I made a note. Uh, he did explain to me, he did an, an equipment breakdown on his bid. The one seventy is for properties that's gonna include, uh, the large brush tractors, uh, stump grinders, something that's heavily wooded, that he'd have to go in there and clean, that's where the one seventy would come into play. If it's a repeat property, and it's regularly maintained by the city, he said that, that would be approximately a hundred dollars, an hour, would be a, a lower bid, due to just using the smaller equipment, the weed eaters, and it won't be as bad as the first attempt. Um, uh, I don't believe he has had mowing contracting service other than the residential, so I didn't really have any businesses to verify anything with him on. Um, he's like, he's got a barber shop in Portland, and veteran owns, and he's got the, I believe he's got the same amount of equipment as the previous bidder, the, the Superior Interior, and his crew is roughly four guys with him included, uh, but he stated that he could get a few other guys if it's a bigger job, or needed help. So, the last two bids, the Superior and the Keeping It Green, uh, what would be the two that I would recommend, um, preferably the Superior Interior, just because it's a little bit lower bid, um, he is a local, I mean, a local business owner with his food truck here in town, and, and, and he brought up, I believe his location, the seven thirty-five North Commercial, he's actually remodeling that building, you, I checked with the building department on the permits, he's actually in good standing with the building department as well, he's got all his current permits, so he's, he's actually bringing an old building back to life as well for his business, so, that would just be my recommendation, uh, and it's of course up to the council, which way, which one you wanna go with, but I think that's what I got for you guys. If that answers your questions, if you, if that works.
Yes it does.
So yours is seventy-five dollars an hour for the three hands, plus whatever equipment you take.
Well, yeah, if you look at the list of the equipment, I don't think there's one job, looking at the, looking at the, the list of stuff that Cory sent me to, that I would use every piece of equipment. It just depends, if I had to use a tractor cutter, then of course the tractor cutter price would be there, plus the, and the weed eaters. I looked at my list the other night when I had a conversation with Cory, and I don't think there's a job, looking at the list of jobs that you need to do, I'd ever go over one ten an hour, because I'd never use all that equipment at one time, it's just, you're either gonna use a zero turn, a lawnmowers, or you're gonna use a tractor cutter, so you're not gonna use all of them at the same time. So, with, I had never done, I'm, I'm new to doing the bids by the hour, so I was kinda lost with this, so I called Cory, I'm like, Cory, how do you bid on a bid by hour? And he's like, well, normally they bid every piece of equipment they got by the hour, man hours and all this, I'm like, man, that, that could get really pricey looking at a piece of paper. So, yeah, and I said, alright, so I did it that way, but looking at it, I don't see, I don't see any one of the jobs ever going over a hundred and ten dollars an hour, and that's using a tractor cutter. If I had to use a tractor cutter, then yeah, we're probably looking at a little over a hundred dollars an hour. But, and then that's also saying that some of the property that I looked at, I probably would need four people to go and do it. So, you meet one or two, so your price is always gonna change on that, I've just never done it hourly, it's my first time, it is what it is. I've done, um, I've done some commercial properties, I, I used to do, uh, windy shores, and the owners there, they got new ownership, so I got out of doing windy shores, and then so my wife took the job in Corinth City, so I did installize the, the hotels they have up there. I haven't done a lot of commercial property, but I've done some. And I'm currently doing, they just started their big work in Portland, so I just got like four jobs with them, that starts, I gotta have it done by the nineteenth, so, they just called me that on today, but it is just like here, it's just empty lots and stuff like that, it's not, not anything major.
It's pretty much the same.
So, I'm from originally San Antonio, but I re, I retired military here because my wife is here, so my kids go to school here in Rans, and all my equipment is here in Rans Pass, but I do live in Portland.
Well, I do wanna say thank you for your service.
You're welcome, thank you for the support.
Have you, uh, actually walked any of the properties, or seen the properties that...
Only a few, and, um, I actually looked at those, cause Tito, the, the contractor, I put some bids in for the trees, and he sent me to do some trees, and then Cory gave me a house on one of the, I forgot the name of the street, but I went over there, I guess, it's a house, and it has a bunch of trees around it, and it's a lot, and it is really dirty, and like the previous gentleman said, uh, the hourly bid, you know, you'd have to clean that first before you start doing any kinda cutting or anything, so, my question was too, does that play a factor? You give me two or three hours to do a job, and you go there and it's filthy, and you gotta pick up debris, that's gonna, that's gonna run it up just a little bit. So, yeah, I, I did look at one property that Cory had given me, and I went over and looked at it, and it was, he said that's an example, and I'm like, yeah, but once you maintain it once, you won't have to do that all the time. So, I don't know what the previous contractor was doing, but there's no reason why that grass should be above your, above your waist around a house like that.
So, those are the three, um, and we really need to make, if at all possible, we can make a decision.
I'd like to hear from both of them, when could you, if you were awarded the contract tonight, when could you start the work?
In the morning.
Favor of the council?
I have to, I have a question, um, I don't know, this is possible, okay? Can we hire two?
We could, um...
I'm just saying, because of the...
The, uh, we only advertise for one, I'm trying to think it through here, um, but, uh, your question is, could we go with two of the proposals? They would have different prices, of course, and I don't know which two you would select, uh, but, um, you know, that's certainly a possibility, or go with a fallback, um, if, if you're saying if one doesn't, uh, if one gets too busy or something, or doesn't work out, then go with another one?
Not, not necessarily, cause, uh, knowing, just driving through town and seeing the properties, just, you know, getting, uh, as much work done, you know, and having two contractors doing, you know, one working possibly with either one of the code enforcement guys, you know, and just kinda cleaning up the town, is, is just my, my, my thought.
If you have, you, right now, under the current situation, situation without rebidding it, uh, you would have one price, one at another price. Some of the work, I would assume some of the work. I think it would be somewhat of a, somewhat confusing to do that.
Okay, I'm just thinking.
Next time, next time.
Yeah, next time.
I have a question, this, how long is this contract, this bid? How long, is it, is it a timeframe on it, six months, a year? If you're awarded it, how long does it run through?
It normally goes for the season.
Season.
The growing season.
Which is about ten months.
For us, that's right. One more question for me.
We're good. Thank you sir.
They're both good, they're both good. Our preference would be Superior.
Yeah.
I mean, he's, he's done commercial, he understands what our community is, um, he's...
I like both of them.
That's what we were just talking about.
I like both of them.
Yeah, we like both of them too, but...
I mean, they're something in handy.
I agree.
Why don't we do this, why don't we work out the deal where both of us work together?
That was what I asked, but it gets confusing.
Why would it be confusing, I, I would hire, I'd hire him.
We'll hire you for the first four months, and then we'll fire you and hire him.
Now he doesn't want that.
I mean, right now, right now, I'm one or the other. And now we gotta pick one or the other, can't continue on.
Okay.
I mean, I'll be honest, I like both of them.
So do I.
But I like how you just have a flat rate per hour, and Keeping It Green has a variable rate, but as far as work I think both of y'all do, I think y'all both be pretty good at it.
Your motion?
Well then I'll make a motion that we hire Superior Interiors as our primary, um, lawn cleanup people, in the hopes that we can bring Keeping It Green Lawn Service aboard somehow.
I'll second.
Not in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, now we're gonna go to Development Services, which is considering that, on the instruments of a request for proposals for FEMA Construction Management Services.
We can get rid of Cory, can we, I mean, not permanently, but...
Bye Cory.
Bye Cory, you gotta go.
Bye Felisa.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Before you have, requesting permission to go out for proposals for professional services and construction management for the remaining FEMA projects. As y'all know, we got a lot of projects going on, and we're adding the bulk kit, which is a major project. We wanna make sure we have someone constantly watching, like we're doing the Harbor Road project. This will be covered through FEMA. FEMA pays 90 percent, the state company pays 10 percent of the remaining, or, they pay 75 percent of the 10 percent, and we're responsible for the remaining. So, the minimum RFE, and I think it's a good idea to have someone 100 percent of the time watching these final projects. We have the bulk kit, we'll do the electrical at the treatment plant, the SCADA project at the, for the sewer lift stations, and then we're adding the two storm pumps that's coming up for bids within the week or so. So that'll be four projects that we'll have someone day-to-day be out there and monitoring this. So, like I said, it's a, I think a win-win when FEMA covers the majority of it.
Make sure they keep an eye on it, it'll be...
I think that's important.
One of the people that will be bidding, we assume, will be the company that's monitoring overseeing the concrete. Doesn't mean they'll get it, but they will...
They've done a good job.
Yeah, they will.
I'll make a motion that we go out for issuing self，请发个申请， request for proposals for FEMA project, construction projects, management services.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, we're gonna go to City Council and staff announcements. We have a workshop meeting May 25th, 2021.
That's correct. And I gotta go through this quickly, so I can win a bet on the times the meeting ends. What we have so far is Panhandling and Gold Mesa.
What was that?
Roxanne would be handling those. Safety concerns at Lighthouse Lakes, I'm sorry, that's a grant.
Oh, okay, I was, okay.
And safety concerns at Lighthouse Lakes. That's a follow-up on the Corps, not the Corps, the Coast Guard, and making sure we move forward with that. And EOC operations, you got, on the weekend, I sent you a memo about the screens around. We want you to see and hear what we're talking about, and see if you're okay with that. We're talking about this room, it's been hardened for that purpose. Speed bumps, and speed bumps in a certain part of town, you need to support that idea. In case someone damages their car, there's always could be a lawsuit. So it's not a matter of staff just putting them in, you would need to support that. And see if you agree with it, you may disagree with it, which is fine, you know. And fences on City Rideaway, that's another issue that Cory has brought up, and there are a lot of them around town, and wanna talk with you and update you on, on different issues that we run across when there are fences on City Rideaway, and how to address it from this point on. So, anyway, those are the issues that we may add to it, we may take away from it. But that's where we are at this point for the May 25th workshop meeting, if it continues to go in that direction. So, anyway, that's where we are.
Cleaning is good. Do you wanna say something?
Well, we thought that this was a workshop, and apparently it was not. We had a couple of bids.
Can we come up here?
Y'all can. Is that okay?
It's okay.
No, I know.
Don't be scared to walk up.
She's gonna say something.
We didn't know it was May 25th for your workshop.
Well, we thought it was every Monday besides the city council.
I'm so sorry, we'll get this straight. Our, one thing we wanted to offer ourselves for is, we know that you'll be doing a citywide cleanup before shrimpery, and we, our understanding is, is that the city hires big mowers to come in and really mow everything really well before shrimpery. And as we know, there'll be a lot of trash and such as that left in the grass lines, and we wanna clean it, but we wanted to know if we could be notified of when the cleaning crew, as far as the mowers, will be and where, and then we'll go in right after that and clean, so we'll be pretty for our shrimpery.
Yay.
And if y'all, somebody could let us know. And then we, we just had, well, we, you know, we don't know exactly how we're supposed to do, so if I'm out of line with anything, just like, go away, go away. Anyway. But as we go around town, and you know, we have a yard of a month, and we're picking areas of the town that maybe are not the prettiest, so that hopefully the neighbors will get involved and follow suit. But we've noticed there's so many areas that don't have their street signs, and we don't, sometimes we don't know where we're at.
That is an issue.
It, it kinda is an issue, and we wondered, how, what do we, how do we get that? What happens there with street signs?
We just ordered a bunch, and Fernando's here can address it in more detail than I, but we put up a lot of street signs blown down by the hurricane, and there are still some left, and I don't know if it's a budgetary issue.
Yeah. Right now, the main ones are off the main roads, there's, the crossroads all have lines on them. If you go further in, it's a little more scary, because there's a lot of mine here, and it's a kind of trick that we don't have a budget for.
Okay.
So there you are.
We'll, we'll, we'll put it on the workshop, or whatever.
And as the mayor and the council just said, June 18th, you're welcome to be at that meeting, if you wish.
Oh, we'll be here, if we possibly can, we'll be here.
It's a strategic meeting, where the department heads, and I'm sure Fernando will make a very aggressive effort before the council on the signs.
We love aggressive.
Good. And the council will prioritize, and we take their prioritization to the budgetary process. And Vicki is on the budget committee, so there's a process for addressing that, and of course, other issues. So, June 18th, and we'll reserve some seating for you.
And then we had just one other, I need to sit down, Jan. Anyway, we had an idea, because you know, we're all in this idea group here, and we're free, so there you go. If we could come up with something about maybe perhaps recycling, uh-oh, is that a buzzword?
No, I, I, I've said it before.
You know, we even, we had a little meeting this afternoon, and we may even have some folks that could volunteer, maybe work with HEB on boxes. You know, everybody's got about a thousand Amazon boxes coming every week, or maybe I'm speaking for only myself. I don't... But anyway, you know, so we don't fill all the, the trash dumps up with it, maybe we could get some of it recycled. And we didn't know where to go with that idea. So I said, well, you know, we'll go to our city, new, new city council people.
There you go. Gary, can we put that on the workshop?
We can, and we have before.
Okay, good.
This has come up.
I remember William did a presentation, so that would be great.
Excellent topic, and it comes down to cost, because of the additional containers, and, and the market, I, the last word I had, a few months ago, the market for what we're talking about is down. So, being able to get rid of it, the pick of the carrier, is very difficult for them to make it worth their while. So you know who has to make that difference up?
We'd have to tax it back on our, probably our water bills, I would guess.
Be careful.
Well...
He already said it.
One of our team members has been working with this information, and she said, one of the cities that she's worked with, every three months, they had a $12 bill tacked on, but it'd be like $3 a month extra for recycling coverage.
Keep in mind, the council's not suggesting that.
Four, four dollars, four.
Keep in mind...
Four quarters more.
The council's not suggesting that, but that's certainly, there are a lot of options there. And to follow up on what Councilwoman Moore just said, it can't, we can't talk about it again at a work session.
Yeah, sure.
Not supposed to talk about it.
Anything tonight.
Yeah, it would be safe if we did in a workshop.
Right now, right now, we're really stepping out of the bar.
But anyway, if you wanna use those to help you clean up the roadways, our entries, our port of entry, after the mowers come, because that way we won't get mosquito bit to death or sail.
That man right there.
Yeah.
Cory.
Cory.
No, 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 right there, Cory.
Yeah.
That's the guy, that's the gentleman. Cory's our friend. That's the guy.
We actually adore Cory.
We do too.
And I thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you. I'm gonna make a motion when you adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.